Oh, I'm gonna say it again. It's October 8th, 2024. Welcome to the Clickatuck County Commissioners' regular meeting. All three commissioners are present with Mr. Christopher online. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Christopher, do you have anything for the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda, noting we are pulling item number three, the Public Works Fairgrounds Licensing Agreement, as well as adding, under miscellaneous, the update from our Economic Development Department.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Christopher? All those opposed?
I was an aye.
Okay, thank you. We just didn't hear it. No problem. Okay, consent agenda.
Usually we do the public comment first.
Okay, yep, I see it now. I went right past it. I wrote something next to it. So we'll turn to public comment. If you're in the room and like to comment, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Come forward to the table so everyone can hear you and use the mic. And also online, please unmute or raise your hand and we'll call on you. So we can start, I believe, online. Is there... Ara, I think you're our first participant today. Good morning.
Good morning. I have no comments really on that one. Or can I state any, anything, any concerns?
Yes.
Okay, so we live in a very general rural zoned area and on Echo Road in Lisle, Washington, off of Johnson Road. And I'm speaking in behalf of all the homeowners here. My neighbors who cannot come to the meeting. They are between 60, 65 to 85 year olds. And we've talked amongst ourselves. And there's a new neighbor that came, bought the house next door to me, and turned out they don't live here. They are, they bought this property next door to me to turn it into an Airbnb. And we have had someone trespass, our two people trespassing in our property and the next door, the other next door neighbor's property on a Saturday night, so two nights ago, or three nights ago, sorry. And they were, they were smoking. And so that, I kindly asked them to, they cannot be in the private property. This is a private driveway and they had to leave, so they left. And we've had almost weekend, almost every weekend, parties, loud or not, big groups in their backyard. Now, this is a zone for general rural neighborhood where there is a private driveway shared amongst the homeowners between 65 to 85 year old. They, you know, they are retired folks. And we would like to maintain our peace and just the virality of this area. And the reason why we live out here is to maintain that peace and to maintain that type of environment and not try crowd and loud and different type, different cars pulling up, you know, our private driveway, private shared driveway, in and out, strangers. Now, these people that bought the house are not from around here. They are living at the moment in California and just bought this property to rent out as an Airbnb short stay. None of us are happy about it. And we are asking for the Commissioners' help on this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ara. Perfect timing. And we'll comment after everyone else makes public comment. So wait for our comment. I might have a question for you too, if you can wait. Thank you. So in the room? Back online? Please raise your hand or unmute and we'll call on you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kaylee.
How are you guys today, other than... Quick question, and I would like each of you to respond. How many hours per week does each Commissioner spend on official county business throughout all the different boards, advisories, all of that, not in county? Well, Jake, don't include the bridge because I know that that's gonna be like 100 hours a week. But all the other stuff, I would really like to know, how many, how many hours does each Commissioner spend on official Commissioner business? And I think that's all I have today.
Thank you, Kaylee. We'll get back to you. Okay, back online. Please unmute or raise your hand.
There's Kathy and Aya and KGM.
Okay, Kathy? Did you want to speak this morning? You are unmuted. Ara has her hand up. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we've got KGM.
KGM. Can you hear us, KGM? You're unmuted. And that's how we identify if you'd like to give comment. They might be Ara's neighbors, I'm thinking.
We can try Aya.
Okay, let's try Aya.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Aya Walker. I'm calling you from the state of Utah. And I'm taking a few minutes of your time this morning because we're nearing the two-year anniversary of my daughter's death. And I have a question for the Commissioners. Are you aware that your sheriff closed the investigation into my daughter's death despite recommendations from the Attorney General's office that were not followed? Are you aware that the case was closed without standing Attorney General recommendations, which included forensic drowning experts, discussion about the likelihood of Hannah drowning on her own under those circumstances? They concluded that it was highly unlikely. They made specific recommendations, including warrants, DNA testing, interviews with witnesses, et cetera. I would like to know if you are aware of this situation and what you have done, what you intend to do to mitigate the danger to your community with people that are acting this way in your positions of authority? Thank you.
Thank you, Aya. Okay. Back online. Is there anyone else with comment this morning? Please unmute yourself or raise your hand. If not, we'll move back to the room. Mr. Smith? It's looking like it. Nobody else is?
2662.
2662, you are saved.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tracy from Lisle.
Good morning, Tracy.
Yeah, good morning. So today I was reading through the consent agenda with the day wireless system that emergency management wants to put in the cameras. And I have some questions on that. So I know that the Stacker Butte site is leased from a person and it's managed by the, how do you say it? The co, not the coalition, but the, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it. But anyway, a consortium, that's it. The Consortium, which is Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue in the Dells, the tribe and the Forest Service. And that the Consortium in the lease agreement states that they are in charge of the shelter and everything in the shelter and that there's just a lease for the Clickatuck County Dispatch. And I'm wondering why Dispatch is putting cameras in the shelter. I know that they're doing things in the shelter here as according to this contract that they have. And so why, why is the county, Clickatuck County, having to pay all this money for cameras, security cameras for the shelters or for the site when they don't own the site? There's other subleases, you know, there are sublease. There's other people that manage the site and they should be putting some money in towards this. The other thing is, is the actual contract itself. So the contract, it says it's between Day Wireless Systems of Moses Lake, Washington. But then it goes on to say, Day Wireless Systems of Yakima. And the payment is sent to a Milwaukee, Oregon address. I'm just wondering why it would say, Day Wireless of Moses Lake, Washington, when it is to the Yakima Day Wireless. And then another thing is, so Gary Bluen used to manage the Wheelers Communication Place in the Dells. All of the agencies in Clickatuck County got their radios and pagers and such from Wheelers Communication. Gary Bloom now is the president of the Co-op in Hood River, the Hood River Electric Co-op in Odell. The Hood River Electric Co-op in Odell also offers internet. And now they're offering internet in places other than their Co-op members. I'm wondering if Day Wireless is who Gary Bloom used to be the engineer under. And I'm wondering if there's some correlation between the Co-op and Clickatuck County. And can you tell me if there's any, any joining of the Co-op, Hood River Co-op, or anything like that? I went to go to a public meeting up there and was told that the public meeting is not open to the public. I've never heard such a thing. But I guess Co-ops don't have to have public meetings open, so there's no transparency there, which makes me wonder again about Gary Bluen and Day Wireless.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back online. If you'd like to speak, unmute or raise your hand, please. Sherry. Sherry, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm sure that all, that the stuff that Tracy from Lisle speaks about is probably pretty foreign to a lot of people. And I'm a pretty simple girl, I think sometimes, maybe, maybe I'm not so bright, but I try to keep things simple in my head. And, you know, with a big observation, I kept wondering, why is our so-called quote-unquote government continuing to partner with private corporations with this public-private partnership thing, I guess we got going on? But our quote-unquote government is contracting with private companies, private corporations to do governmental work? Okay, so I guess that's our world today. But that means our public money that you take from us goes to who you choose. You get to choose who operates the system and how the system operates. And who gets to make the money? You know, maybe there's some friendships there. Maybe you guys might know some people who might want that contract more than others. So I have a problem with PPPs, public-private partnerships. I'm gonna say that in general. And if our government is taking public money from the public, I would like our government to have more control. So let's just look at what happened. And I don't watch news and I don't have social media, so this is just very limited information that my AI tries to shove through on YouTube to me. But the flooding over in the east and how the government's not prepared to help the citizens. So, you know, I guess somebody texted me, we're having volcano, earthquakes on Adams, okay? So I know the last lava flow flowed all the way down to Houston. So are we prepared and out here to take care of our local people? Should we have any devastation of any sort? You know, I read somewhere where FEMA wants every local, which was funny, was the FEMA document, company or, you know, municipal corporation to have a continuance of government plan? And I'm wondering, does Clickatuck County have that? And you're supposed to work locally with people to try to set up a local emergency thing so we can locally help each other and bring in local resources if needed? And then also, I was interested to hear that emergency management has to contract through the military again. And, you know, so I'm hoping that maybe the military will make some accountability. Is our area ready for a disaster? Are we ready to help each other? What are our emergency things happening? I remember when 911 went out. You know, so I guess my question is, is are we prepared to handle things? And if we're relying on private companies, I don't know. So do we have a continuance of government? I think one was created. How about that question? Do you have one in place?
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, back online. Anyone else with comment this morning? Seeing no one yet. Mr. Smith? Start walking this way. Time is, time is ticking. Yes, it is. Okay, one more try. Okay. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. Andrew Smith, Clickatuck County. Boy, lots of questions, lots of things happened through the whole weekend. I have been impressed. I think some people better just learn that they better start writing their senators and congressmen if they want anything to happen. It's not always down at the county level. I have found that out. Boy, did I learn a lot this weekend. I was surprised how naive some people are. So anyway, hopefully we can have, you know, BOCC town meetings. Hopefully, I'll keep pushing it. And good luck on the jail. And there is private people around here that do help out if 911 needs help, to call on too. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And since we're at the end, let's give Kathy one more try. You're still unmuted. If you'd like to speak. You're unmuted and we can give that a whirl. And if not, KGM is unmuted. So hearing nothing. We'll go ahead and let Commissioners' comments next. Mr. Christopher, you're online. Would you like to go first?
I do not have anything today.
Okay, Mr. Anderson? Okay, I can, I can go. So Ara, thank you for calling in. I do have more questions for you. And to make it easy for you, in case we have a long line of questions that I have for you, could you call into our office at 509-773-4612, the Commissioners' office, and leave your contact information for me and I'll reach out? Thank you. Oh, Leanne's telling me she has it. So she'll give it to me and I'll be able to contact you. But I'll contact you privately. And I can say that, yes, the Airbnbs have came back on the radar, the Commissioners'. I've had some private calls and it is a subject that we need to take back up and start working on again. Kind of languished for a little bit. So I'll reach out to, to fill in my questions and my dots that I have for your situation. And then, so expect to hear from me. We'll move forward. Kaylee, honestly, I don't know. I don't know how many hours of work I do a week. I know it's more than 40. I would estimate 50, if not more. I do work weekends. I try to take half a day off Saturday or Sunday. Sometimes it doesn't happen. Everybody knows my three phone numbers. And if they don't get me on one phone, the other one's ringing. Yeah, I might be on one phone and the other one starts ringing because they know how to find me. And I love my job. I enjoy the people and I love working for the people. And some of the things you just can't accomplish in the 40 hours that we, we have for a regular work week. There's just no way. You have to meet the people at their time and their place. And a lot of times, that's in the evenings. People think Commissioners don't work hard. If you're committed, you do. And I'm available in the evenings and I'm available anytime after 6:00 in the morning people call me. So, but it's a great job and it's great working for the people. Frustrating at times, confusing, hard at times. But I believe in Clickatuck County and I think we're gonna have a bright future. We just have to work hard at it. But thank you, Kaylee. Aya, good to hear from you again. I'm so sorry that we're hearing from you on this day and I'm sorry for your loss. There is information that you gave us that I did not know. As a Commissioner, we are electeds and the Sheriff's Office is an elected position. So those, the way that they're structured, we many times do not interact and cannot interact legally. Things that belong on the Sheriff's side belong on the Sheriff's side. Stuff that belongs to the Commissioners belongs to the Commissioners. So some of the things you're talking today, I believe, are not on my checklist. They're not things that I can impact. Unfortunately, they have to come from the public through your attorneys, through the state that you've contacted. But thank you for calling in and thank you for the information. And you have kept it on my radar and I appreciate it. And Tracy at Lisle. Do we want to let Mr. King answer some of those questions? Some of those are beyond me. I know the corporate question for why the contract looks different, I'm quite sure they're a large corporation with separate offices. And so some of it goes to the main corporate office, others go to the work office and other ones go to the billing office. That's not unusual. As far as, with you too, Sherry, as far as government contracts, those go out for bid. There is no way that we can specifically give preference to one over the other. They have a legal process. They go through with a lot of questions and questionnaires to fill out, almost like a job interview. And those are shared, not only by the directors, they're shared with the Commissioners as well to make those choices. I don't know much about the Co-op up in Hood River at all, but I understand it's probably a private entity and you probably bumped up against that wall for not being able to attend their meetings because it's, it's not probably a public-type meeting. It's probably more of a, a private work group. Those would be my best guess on those. And they're not affiliated with emergency management at all or Day Wireless. So we have nothing to do with that group. We don't know their business and they aren't part of ours. So Gary Bloom sold his business to Day Wireless and if he's involved with another group, we have nothing to do with that. So Day Wireless is the person that we now work with, the entity that we work with. And they have valid contracts and do good work. And Mr. Smith, thank you. And state and federal is so true. They're our partners. And we have to get through our daily work and try to make sure we stay in touch intact and help them with their work so they can help us. We need to build those relationships. And it's very little time in between everything else to attach ourselves with those partners and make sure we're helping them so they can help us. But they're crucial relationships. But thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ara, thank you to Commissioner Zoller for being the one who's gonna take this up. I will let her spearhead this and I'll look forward to her report back to the board. Kaylee, that's a great question on how many hours we spend per week. That definitely changes each week. It changes on each fire that we have to put out and each project that we're working on. I know that when you are the chair, it is almost like two times a regular job because you're doing your regular stuff on top of all the special things you do as the chair. And so I thank Commissioner Zoller for her work this year being the chair. And I know that she is putting in a massive amount of work as in that role. I could tell you that the best way to answer that question is what your family would say. And my family would say that you work too much and you're never here for dinner. You're never here for evening because you're always at evening meetings and you're always meeting other people. So that's the best way I could answer that. We don't keep our hours. I can tell you that the Commissioners are considered a 0.85% of an FTE for pay. And we are the only county in the state that figures any county Commissioner is less than a full-time equivalent. So I could just put that out there. I think Commissioner Zoller did a great job explaining that the Board of County Commissioners has over no oversight authority of the Sheriff's Office and the investigators in the Sheriff's Office. We also don't have any authority over the prosecutor nor the judges. And so when you ask, what have we done? There's nothing that we legally can do. I just want you to know that my thoughts and prayers are with you and have been with you this entire time. There's no bigger fear than losing a child.
Am I able to comment?
Not right now, I'm sorry. Tracy. The cameras are going in Stacker Butte site because we got a grant and because we need to protect our equipment. And we're also going to use those for our own emergency management and safety uses, both for fires as well as when we get any other emergency notification, we can log into those things. This is a normal process in business and for the government. And I would like to thank our Emergency Management Department for getting the grants so that we can move forward with this. You were answered with regards to Wheelers. I would also mention that as far as I know, Hood River Electric Co-op has nothing in Clickatuck County. They don't do any business in Washington State that I'm aware of. Oh, Sherry, you hit on a lot of things. Government partners with private businesses in order to provide governmental functions and almost every single governmental agency does that in some form or fashion. When you, when you speak today about Day Wireless, Day Wireless is a vendor who is providing services to the county because no one in the county has the expertise to do the work that Day Wireless does. They work in a niche market and that's what they do. We go through bidding processes, so there is no special favors for your friends or anything else. Everything's open public bid. If it's not open public bid because it's small works, then it goes through a small works roster, which goes through an entire process. You can't just give money to a friend or anything like that. That's not how government works. That's how the government processes work. That's not how government contracting works. Thank you for bringing up the earthquakes on Mount Adams. I've seen that this is getting a lot of media attention in the Portland market as well as online in the news. And our Emergency Management Director made, made us all aware of this last week before it hit the public so that we could help to explain and identify the situation. And I believe our Emergency Management put out a press release. And I believe our emergency management put out a press release on this. And we're trying to do a few things on Mount Adams. Emergency management has been working with the North Volcano Institute, I can't remember the the actual name of it, to put sound monitors up on the mountain because we've always said that a Lahar from the mountain is our biggest worry for the Trout Lake Basin. And so we're trying to make sure that they can get adequate forewarning in any event. The seismometers that they're putting up there are to better watch the mini quakes that are happening on the mountain. I can, not trying to throw cold water, but right now it's not, this isn't the lead up to Mount St. Helens in nineteen eighty. This is, they're they're just looking at it a little closer. And we're all in support of that because we want to keep a close eye on our volcanoes. You're asked about the continuous of government plan. So we do have a continuity plan. We have an emergency management plan that is all documents that we update every so often. And I think we did that a few years ago, the last time we updated our emergency management plan. And we went through that thing top to bottom. It's expensive to update those plans. You can't do it every year. But they are on the shelf, ready to go in case of any emergency. When you talk about contract through the military, again, that's the state military department. And we get grants from the state military department and have for many years. That's a normal process of government. Mr. Smith, I don't know what specifically you were talking about, what you learned this weekend, but every weekend that we learn is a good weekend. What I can tell you is, yes, there is so much that people love to blame the county commissioners for, thinking that that we have control over just about everything God touches. When in actuality, we actually have very limited authority that the state legislature gives us. And so many times people come to us asking us for to fix things and really it's either the state or federal legislatures that have control over it, if not the governor's office. So thank you for continuing your education and for bringing it to us. And with that, I will give it back to you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for checking in today. And Ara, I'll get hold of you this afternoon when we have a break. Thank you so much. Okay. So consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with two items, pulling item number three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Payroll.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the payroll warrants in the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty one dollars and thirty eight cents.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just say that that's about the lowest payments we've had in any week ever and the box showed it.
Yeah. Yes, it did.
I know you're not here to see it, Commissioner Christopher, but it was very quick.
Not much in the invoice box to review today. Mr. Christopher, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So Commissioner miscellaneous reports and comments. I believe we have economic development, Richard Foster.
And while he's walking up here, I just mentioned that we did the Bridge Centennial this weekend. And they had over four thousand people sign up for it. They had thirty five hundred stickers and from what I saw, about a third of the people on the bridge didn't even have stickers. And so I took a video where the bridge was completely full from the Oregon side to the Washington side. Completely full. It was an amazing turnout. The handoff of the fruit exchange went really well and it was a great turnout. We had Senator King show up, Ron Wyden from Oregon were the the main speakers. And then Mayor Marla spoke. And somebody else spoke, but it was a, it was an amazing event, amazing turnout and you couldn't ask for a better way.
No, I saw pictures and videos. It was a lot of people out there on the bridge.
Lot of people.
Yeah.
So I had a quick question. A couple of weeks ago, we went out for, we had a discussion during the budget session in regards to our office manager position and it was discussed to bring that down to approximately halftime and change the title of that, working with Rob. Looks like we're going to suggest, based off the guidance the commissioner has given of a, have given us for that position. We're asking for a clerical administrative assistant, grade three. That's going to be about twenty dollars and eighty one cents an hour. And we're looking at doing that part-time, three eighths, so twenty four hours a week. The difference between the grades one, two and three is grade one would be grade thirty four. Two would be thirty five and three would be thirty six, grade thirty six. So a request for grade three, twenty four hours.
And just for the record, how, what percentage of this position will be grant funded? Or three point oh nine dollars?
All of it.
Mr. Christopher, do you have a question or comment?
Other than if we're looking for verbal to hire, which I think we've kind of already done, I guess I would say I I prefer to have these requests brought in by HR so that we can ask questions that I don't know that Richard can answer. And that is where do our clerical admins currently sit in what grade to make sure that we're not hiring one in a grade that we don't hire others in? Sorry, that was supposed to be a silence phone. Just to make sure that we're hiring a clerical admin in a grade that that the rest of the clerical admins go in and we're not making an exception to the rule. And I don't know if Richard can answer that or if it's an HR question.
Do you have an answer?
Uh, yeah, so this, yeah, I mean, we we could bring this up again next Tuesday with Robert or this upcoming Thursday. Not not a big deal. I would say the the request today would just be asking for approval to go out for advertising for the position. That was the request, so.
So if it's going out for ad, is it an ad between one and three or you just said step three?
I would, I would like to have step three, but I think with step three, so the difference between step one and step three is it's eighteen dollars and fifty three cents an hour for step three. For step one, it's basically twenty dollars and eighty one cents and it, for each grade, it's it's an extra dollar per per hour. I think we're going to get a little bit more longevity with the part-time at step three than we are at a step add, than than we are at step one. But we, I I can talk to Rob too, if the commissioner's like, we can go advertise based off experience for steps one through three clerical administrative assistant.
So are you saying then that everybody who applied for the previous position, you've let them know that it's going to be a it's going to be a part-time position and all of them said, thank you, but no, thank you?
So the, so we only had one interview and we, the very next day. And I let them know, hey, there's a lot of questions in the air. Do we have to go back out to re-advertise? Or can we just move forward from here and HR came back and said that we need to close that one and then reopen to allow everybody the the chance to apply again.
And did HR, have you, and you've spoken to HR about this, grade three going out for ad on that and they have given thumbs up?
Yes.
And I think it's a a great training position. I like the idea of starting low.
Yeah, if, as long as HR is is good with it and they can't I'm trying to understand what Commissioner Christopher was getting at, but the clerical administrative position is a grade and that, and if it's equal everywhere. And so as long as you're following what's equal everywhere, then I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I agree. I have no problem with it as long as it's not a problem with HR.
Okay.
And you. And I guess for clarification, I want to make sure it's equal everywhere, but I'd also like the board to have a level of consistency. And if HR is going to be the one posing the permission to rehires in ninety eight percent of the cases, I would hope that they would have HR ask for permission to rehire in a hundred percent of the cases. Just so that we were allowed to ask formal questions of HR when they ask for permission to rehire.
Well, I guess we could always ask if Casey's available, she can come down in a little bit, if you have questions, Commissioner Christopher.
I can go down.
Yep, that would be a good idea.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Okay, any other Commissioner miscellaneous reports or comments? Mr. Christopher, any?
I want to clarify, I I just think it's wise to not we need to keep a level of consistency. So if if HR is the one that knows what step and pay grade that most of these things go to, regardless of it's clerical admin or if it's something else, we should probably defer our decisions until we have them doing it a hundred percent of the time, just so that we're not bobbleheading yes to questions that we we may not a hundred percent get the answer to. I don't know if that explained anything, but that's that's where I'm at.
Okay, hopefully HR will be here in a couple of minutes and you can ask any questions. Do you have any updates from the last week?
I do not. It was a busy week, but I I don't can't think of anything that we haven't brought forward and been working on.
And workforce development, but it was during a budget day, so I couldn't attend. So I was, because I was at a budget meeting, so I don't have an update on it.
I guess I can give a little bit of an update. I had the Clicktack County Internet outage meeting yesterday with Director King in Blue Mountain and I felt it was a very positive and productive meeting. And this, this was regarding the the large outage in August that lasted almost a week, six days. And it was a productive meeting where Blue Mountain had felt that it was a hundred percent that they they had sent people immediately up here and they plugged into our servers or into our ports and said, looks like we've got internet, it's on your side. And then IT had spent the the working, you know, day and night trying to figure out, well, how, where can it be in in our side? And what we'd in the end found out was it was actually on Blue Mountain's side when they replaced some hardware. That made a change on our side and we didn't find that out until late. We found it out Sunday, Blue Mountain found it out really on Monday and by Monday evening, they kind of had it fixed. We had asked for a few things to change in the future. Number one is when Blue Mountain is going to start changing out hardware or doing major updates, they need to let us know so that if something changes on our side and goes down, at the same time, they're supposed to be working on it. At least it helps us get to that answer quicker. They're also going to give us the their engineers' numbers so that when we actually do go down, we can get in touch with the people who actually have the skills and and knowledge to actually fix a problem. They did recognize that, you know, when we go down, it is life and safety issues because that means that nine one one is down, that it has a huge impact on us. And the other thing is, is that they, that when we put together a task force or a team, they will make sure that that we, they have someone on it when we don't know what the heck the problem is, when it's something like this. They did say, and I know that that a lot of staff had been experiencing a lot of issues the previous few months. They did say that the replacement of that piece of critical hardware may have been the reason that we can been going down for ten minutes here, twenty minutes there for months. And it sounds like it's gotten better since then. So it was a expensive, difficult time, but we got through it and I think as long as they fulfill their end of the bargain, we can keep moving forward.
Thank you.
I brought Casey.
Thank you, Casey. The hammer.
So Casey, are we going to advertise at step three? Are we going to advertise step one through three like we usually do?
It, it's typically we advertise for the clerical two or three and steps one through three.
That's what I figured.
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Christopher, you had some questions?
That that pretty much answered my questions. We never advertised for clerical. I hope people aren't getting the clerical step three confused because it's a clerical one, two or three. The steps are pay grades. But we don't usually advertise for a clerical one through three. We usually advertise for a two and three is what you're saying?
Uh, it it depends on the department. So like in the the HR department, our box is a clerical administrative assistant, one, two or three. And so if we were to advertise, we would advertise for the clerical one, two or three and then also steps one through three for each position.
Correct. So I I I believe we should be advertising for a clerical admin assistant, one through three with steps payable at also step one through three. That gives us, casts us a bigger net and and I want to make sure that if we have the the unicorn that fits in the clerical admin three, step three, that's fine, we can pay them, but I don't want somebody fresh out of high school that that probably should start at a lower pay grade being started at a clerical admin three, step three, because that's what we posted for. And is this changing the org chart box forever? And will the org chart box be now listed as a clerical admin, whatever we decide, one, two, three or just two, three?
Was that a question? So it's clear to the public too, the one, two, three, three is, has the least amount of experience that you would.
Three has the most.
Has the most, so that's backwards from the way. Okay, so and you're advertising for a three?
Yeah, for, yeah. Based off the most recent recommendations would be grades one through three, which would be grades specifically thirty four through thirty six.
Okay.
Steps one, two or three is basically associated with annual years. Which would be the pay range, what we're looking for, if we're just talking numbers, would be a pay range between eighteen dollars and fifty three cents an hour to twenty two dollars and seven cents an hour, depending on experience.
All of it, yeah, would be depending on qualifications.
So in your.
Consistent with what we do normally, right?
Correct, yes.
What your first rationale was more experience you felt like was needed in your department than one?
Yeah, I think, I think a little bit more experience, especially if they're going to be dealing with like cayenta and budgeting issues, but.
And the grants.
And and the grants. But secondly, just from a longevity perspective, the last I think in today's day and age, with minimum wage being, I think, just north of fifteen dollars an hour, am I?
Sixteen twenty eight right now.
So sixteen dollars and twenty eight cents an hour is the current minimum wage. If we hire somebody at thirty four with eighteen fifty three, I'm, especially part-time, I'm probably going to lose them in three to six months. And it's not really going to help the department. If 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 we go for a grade thirty four, I feel like we're competing against nothing against our local fast food, but Dairy Queens or McDonald's. The last person left for just a extra few thousand dollars a year. I think if we went with step with grade thirty six, two or three, thirty five or thirty six, which would basically, the pay range would go from nineteen sixty six an hour to twenty two dollars an hour. I think even at part-time, hopefully we can have them for a substantial amount of time, for longevity.
Well, the the purpose of posting it the way we are doesn't lock you in at a clerical admin one. It allows you as a director to interview your your clients. And if you find the the one with the qualifications that fits what you're looking for, then by all means hire them. And if you don't, then by all means go out and post more. But it it allows for a wider net so that we don't find ourselves overpaying for somebody's experience, which is what we've done in the past.
And at the twenty four hours a week, they will be able. And at the twenty-four hours a week, they will be eligible for benefits, correct?
Yes, yes, that puts them at a part-time point six FTE position, which is a benefited position.
And again, it is covered either by grant or by point oh nine, that's correct.
Yeah.
So we're not using general fund dollars.
No, no general fund.
Right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can go one through three, it's, it's not the, not the biggest, the biggest thing is today, can we go out? Can we just get it out?
Thank you.
Commissioner Christopher?
The, the reason for doing this is not to hammer on you, it's to set a precedent that we always go this way. No exceptions, and then leave it up to the department head to interview and, and make their choice accordingly. I don't want to set an exception and then the next one comes in and says, oh, well, we let Richard do this. Um, so it's, it's the same for everybody and now it's just up to you to hire and, and find who you want.
And, and I can agree with that, Mister Christopher, on a case-by-case basis right now, but that's a longer conversation. That I'd like to have the commissioners all have to set a policy and come up with why. Cause I have some difference of opinion on that, but we'll save that, just one, two, or three is fine and get the advertising done. Thank you.
Thank you, that, that makes sense, thanks.
Okay, uh, Public Works, you've been very patient, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, now I see a, a photo. A photo. Oh, okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we'll get started, um, uh, we did pull item three, we'll discuss that a little later on in the program. Um, and we have one change order for the courthouse remodel project. Um, what we did is, is we, cause we found, we, it's grant-funded. And our bids came in a lot lower, so we have additional grant funding, so we're able to. Get them to replace the doors and the courts would like extra gates and some other things that they, that they wanted. Which we kind of put on hold, now we can do them because we did have some savings. Um, our guys got the work done in a lot less time than we had anticipated. And so we can make some improvements, so there will be a couple other change orders coming, probably next week for. Much more minor stuff, but it's to add stuff to the courtroom that. You know, like gate security things that they don't have now. And if you've seen the courtroom, the courtroom is very nice. And we'll go to construction with that.
All right, the only project we still currently have in construction is the Sunday Old Eight project. Continuing to place rock, finishing slopes, installing erosion control devices and hydro seating the finished slope, so we're nearing the end of that project. On road design, Sunnyside Road, still working on our final review of plans, should be completed this week, so we can get out to add. Uh, the bridge repair bundles are still with the consultant as they work towards sixty percent plans. The Bickleton overlay box springs vicinity, the last set of plans is. And specifications is being put together so we can get advertisement out before the end of this month. Uh, white plastic edge lines and curve warning signs, uh, again, just getting the last little details put together. So we can get through the Wash Dot approvals to get out to advertisement. Road safety plan, staff is working through the awards process with the cons- the selected consultant and Wash Dot. And they should have a kickoff meeting, I believe this week or next week, I can't remember now, moving forward.
Okay, good deal, moving forward, uh, East End is working on Bickleton Highway. In preparation of the paver that comes next year. Um, West End is, uh, finishing up, doing some FEMA work on Cook Road, clean up there. Uh, they repaired a sinkhole in Lyle. And, uh, they're doing a little guardrail repair too, so it's kind of tying up ends in preparation of winter. Which we're hoping doesn't come for quite some time. Uh, Superior Court remodel, minor, few minor items left, events, we have the Harvest Festival, October tw- eighteenth through the twentieth. And that's what this map entails. We're gonna send this out to all the employees, cause after Thursday at five, we're gonna close the parking lots, they've asked for that. Cause they're gonna be doing the court, or the, they're gonna be using the courthouse lawn. And they asked for this parking so they could stage, cause their event starts Friday afternoon. Uh, like I said, that will be passed out to all the, uh, be emailed to everyone. Uh, Fuel Island, uh, window washing, I haven't got up there, but I hear it looks good, so I'm gonna go up and check, hopefully on. Thursday, I'm gonna go up there, I gotta go to the park too, so hopefully gonna get out and do that, we'll see. Uh, jail, everything else is pretty much the same, we have started in the HVAC upgrades in the PA's office. Um, again, with these projects, we try to make things better since you're replacing them. At one time, the unit, the heating unit was actually above the, the PA's office. So every time we had to change the filter, we had to displace people and move people around. It's the only unit we have in the courthouse like that. We are no, it's now is gonna be moved up to the roof. The new unit will be put on the roof and no longer will we be going inside of the, uh, above the people. And doing that, it also makes it nicer too, you don't have a unit sitting above your head. Uh, Dallas Port Community Center, we're in the same place, so we're gonna, I'm gonna jump first. To roll back to the, uh, why we pulled item three. Um, they went in with the four H. Uh, we've seen more of that, again, we told them they have to do that, they have to come up, show up on the four H insurance. So they were able to get on the four H insurance, so just kind of giving the board a heads up. I mean, I'm not saying we wouldn't have waived their fees anyway. Um, and we tell people that, we would look at it, again, it's still not our decision, it's the board's, but it is, it definitely a, an event for. The kids, but I, you know, but we wanted them to do it in lieu of, I think it's more responsible and they hold their events. You remember, we had that, we've had an episode where a four H event got canceled because somebody came in. And rented the place. Uh, so anybody that falls in with four H, they can, their event can still get canceled if somebody comes in. Um, if you, we have allowed people to, if they do in lieu of, we allow them to hold there, but four H does not do in lieu of. So they just get their fees waived and they do nothing. Again, it's something we could talk about at a later time, but just giving the boards the heads up in case somebody ever asks you. Why four H events can be kicked and other ones can't, that is a policy the previous board put in place and this board has honored. If you're paying, you get first preference over an event that doesn't pay. We, in the past, we've looked at it, cause again, like Christian Cowboys, they actually do in Lua, they clean up, they help us prepare for fair. So.
So did we ever talk to four H about helping clean up and doing in Lua and they just said, no, we're not interested?
Exactly.
We just want it for free.
We don't think we can make that happen. Again, you know, that can be a discussion that could be had again.
Sure.
Things have changed at four H. That was a different, uh, director.
Okay.
But things might be looked at in, in a different way. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to, well, let Seth pass these out first. We have some pictures.
The question about the parking around the courthouse.
Yes.
That is just for employees only, regular business people can still park and come in, um, do their business?
Uh, they'll actually be closed on Thursday, uh, Thursday evening, so Friday, we, it's not a very busy day. They'll still be parking, but it will be closed off during that period of time.
Okay.
We've done that for other events, we do it for, um, like, uh. Oh, community days. Uh, Fridays are pretty light, people, we, there's no court now, if there was a court case and it bled over, we would not do, we would not be able to do this.
But if they have business to do with the auditor or the treasurer, the, there'll be places to park.
There's still places to park, yes, there's still places along Court Street, and still places along Allen Street to park.
Okay.
So there's still places for them to park and get to the courthouse. And, you know, we still have the parking lot over by the sheriff. Over by the jail, that's still open, so there's still some, there's definitely some parking available, we just take the premium spots. Um, yeah, not a preferred thing, but that's kind of what the events have asked. Just letting everybody know. Okay, so Seth handed out the pictures because we'll have the, I wanna have the landfill dollar discussion, cause we need to start moving forward. For us, cause we have to do the sixth year. Um, so what is that, what is the, what is the money gonna pay for? This is a project that's been on the, the books for quite a while, it's been kicked the last four years. It keeps getting pushed back. This is the Centerville, Centerville Town Roads and Town Roads in the county have really not, are not in very good shape. At all, this is a prime example. Um, some of these areas are, like I said, right by the school. Um, we're, our window from Seth's talk last week is our window is closing to pave. We can, we're pretty sure we can do it, we can, we're not pretty sure, we know we can still do it. But another couple win, winners and you're reconstructing. So what that means, we're not gonna have the money to do that. I don't want to be the person that grinds up the road by the school. But at that, that's what, that's what the landfill dollars are gonna go to, cause I, I don't have any other money in the budget. Cause our construction budget is really small, or our capital budget. And right now, it's needed to, um, we use it for grants, we'll have more of that discussion during the sixth year, but. Um, that's where we are today. So we need, I guess we would like to have. Uh, if we could, an answer so we can move forward. On our sixth year and start sched- you know, finish our sixth year and start scheduling our hearings, cause we're required to do that.
So are we gonna do this ourselves?
Yes, that's why we, that's why we can do it fairly cheap, it'd be very expensive if we paid somebody to come in and pave it. Now, our guys, like I said, we have that paver, that's getting old, that we rarely use, but this is why we keep the paver. Is for projects like this.
And is the speed limit twenty-five through this? How many total feet is there gonna be?
Um, I don't remember exactly what we're gonna do, it's, it's quite. What we're gonna do is we're gonna do as much of the roads as we can do in Centerville with the money we have. That's the whole idea. Um, so our ideas to get, so you're probably looking at, oh, half to three-quarters of a mile worth of roads. In town. There's a lot of roads in town, we're not gonna get them, we just can't. We're gonna get the ones that have the heaviest use and also the ones that are in the worst shape.
Were all of these paved at one point?
Yes, they all are still paved.
I don't know if I call that paved.
Uh, that's what I mean, they're not in very good shape, they are still paved though, they are still, they're still B S T. Or, you know, yes, they are all paved, most of the town roads are paved. But, you know, the towns have been overlooked for a lot of years and. You know, as of about four years ago, we made a commitment to start doing stuff in the towns. And surprisingly, um, not surprisingly, they've always said this over the years that. Um, if the county, if the jurisdiction goes in and they upgrade the infrastructure, the town upgrades. Prime example of that is in Lyle. If you remember what Lyle looked like before we went in and fixed the roads, the bar that was there was just a junkie. The, uh, surf shop, I don't know what they use it for now, it was all boarded up, all the windows were closed. Um, the other business, I could call them out by name, but had a bunch of garbage sitting there now, they got a big sign, they actually cleaned up. So, be nice if we get, if there were economic development, they've talked about that in the past, but. Using the economic development dollars or allowing for grants for roads, but that's never got out of legislature.
I don't see it happening.
I don't either.
But population is changing out there, so your economy will change.
Yes.
It's slow, but remember what Trout Lake was.
Yes, exactly.
Seventies and eighties, it, everything evolves.
Oh, in the seventies.
Um, but different.
I mean, they had all those people working in the forest, in the forest back then.
Right, but now we have different businesses in town. Yeah, their economy has changed, um, same with Husum, or, um.
So I guess where I'm at is, is we're still have a little bit more discussions on the budget. And we're still over a million dollars in the hole. And we're trying to find everywhere that we can find to fill that. Um, and so I don't want to pull it out yet, but it may be something that we end up having to pull in order to balance the budget.
I get that, I just, I do want to caution everybody. Um, you know, we have to be careful, deferring maintenance just runs up costs.
Well aware, and I know that you guys are doing a good job of limiting your expenses, uh, and not filling positions as well.
We are doing, yes, so we're trying to do our end.
And how long would you say that this has been deferred maintenance?
Uh, we actually brought it forward back in twenty twenty.
Right, but, but this is on our county roads and I'm sure this is all considered failed, right?
Yes.
And so how long do you think it's been a failed road?
And I would say, may, it's gotten worse in the last four years. We actually took, cause be honest with you, nobody looked at. They just thought, they're okay, and you know, we're at fault for that too. And then we started noticing, hey, they're not in good shape, and we started getting complaints. Um, you know, there's potholes all over my town and there's this and there's that. So it's been, it's probably been six years where it's gotten to the failed point. But like Seth said, you know, once it hits that point, it dives fast. It isn't this and just slowly, we're to the point where it's diving fast and a couple more years, it's gravel.
And so are you gonna grind this up and rebuild it if it's considered a failed? Cause I thought you said when it, when they become failed, we have to, we have to go in and reconstruct and grind it and everything at, was it six hundred and ten thousand dollars?
We do for arterials, that is correct. But for this, we can do pavement repair and grind the bad spots, patch and then overlay. Cause there's less traffic to this, that's why we don't want to see it get worse, cause like you said, the speed limit's a lot lower. And the traffic volumes are a lot lower, so we, now if this was Canyon or Snowden. Or something like that, we would be reconstructed, there is no question. Not only that, you don't have as many heavy trips. If we had all that, this, thi- this would be past this, we'd be reconstructing. If our, our, actually Canyon Road looked like this or snowed, we'd be in a world of trouble. Cause it wouldn't last like this very long. We don't want to ever see our, our, those roads get to that.
Yeah, and for me, um, changes in the budget because of ebb and flow and diminishing funds. Uh, the departments are not cookie cutter and there's some places we can cut and take things away. Um, I know you lost money last year, uh, but there comes a point that I think you know your business and you have a six-year road program. You've been doing this a long, long time, that preserving some funds so you can continue with that road program. And keep us up to date rather than cause a bigger hole later may be sensible. And that's where I would stand is, uh, sticking to that six-year road program, so we have that rollout and we can get. And that's where I would stand is uh sticking to that six year road program so we have that rollout and we can get these things done. Where taking everything away from you in one fell swoop leaves that hole may not be very wise.
Again, I'll give, you know, I'm fine giving the board plenty of time to, that's fine. You, and you guys make the calls. I'm okay with, you know, again, we don't have to have the answer today. It helps us move the sixth year. Please keep in mind, before the budget gets done, we have to, we have to have the hearings of the sixth year. They have to follow that sequence. Because the sixth year isn't approved, that means the annual isn't approved and the annual is the budget document. And so just letting you know, just so everybody's aware of the timeframe.
We've got Commissioner Christopher.
Yes. Hands up, Mr. Christopher.
Uh, Jeff, is this, this is the road that got uh backburnered on the plan so we can do Bickleton Highway, correct?
No.
What section of road is this again?
This is the highway. This is the highways in Centerville. Bickleton Highway is done with Fed dollars. We cannot use Fed dollars on a local, these are local access roads that just serve the town.
I thought when we did force contract on Bickleton Road, we agreed to do that. It was using.
Okay, you are right. That's right. I stand corrected.
I was gonna say, so the first projects on Bickleton. The, the part of the thing was to push this off to get Bickleton cuz it had potholes that were taking out tires.
Right, you are correct.
And we fixed that section, so this is now back on high on my radar. And uh, I, I'm in favor of having you go ahead with this, so I don't know where your votes stand. Uh, but I'm a yes and go ahead and repairing the road.
You are correct. Sorry, Commissioner Christopher. I forgot about that piece of that. Of the.
Historical knowledge back to the board.
We did spend county dollars for one year on that, correct?
We spent landfill dollars.
That's what I'm saying. Yes, we did spend landfill dollars on it because at the beginning we said, why, why can't you go get a grant? And you said, we can't get a federal grant for this. We, we don't rank high enough.
Yes, for that piece of it.
And then at the last minute, it seems like for this year, you did get a grant, right, to go.
We got a grant for the overlay portion.
For the next portion of it, not, not the.
Not, not, not the reconstruction portion.
And so if we would have waited a year, could we have got a grant for the reconstruction and the overlay?
No. The reconstruction portion, we did with our crew, which we'd done much cheaper. Cuz we can do the work much cheaper. I, it would have been.
Was it not?
Wasn't it two years of landfill funds cuz it took two years to do that project?
Cuz we didn't have all the money in one pot.
Right, it was, I think, half a million dollars.
Yeah. So that, that's kinda why this got pushed off as long as it was. Was the, the now limited number of landfill funds. It took two years just to do the Bickleton project. Um, so again, this got pushed off and we had the big meeting on deferred. Maintenance and I don't know that this would even be a congress session. For the board if it was actually on the west side. Uh, but uh, again, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with it and authorizing the funds to do it, but again, you need a second vote, so. Show of hands, I guess.
Um, Madam Chair, I don't know where Commissioner Christopher is coming with that on the west side. I think we've been having conversations. For four years about the decline in the landfill revenues uh and what we have to do in order to move those over to keep. Services going within the county. And we had been very clear that those were going to continue and we almost took them all. Two years ago, the reason we left them was in order to do the Bickleton Highway because it was of that high of importance. I just want to keep the expectations very clear that moving forward, especially next year. Um, we've pulled all the levers we can possibly pull. We're likely going to be using um. Excess revenues or fund balance this year in order to balance the budget plus a little bit of cumulative reserves. Uh, would you say that this is the highest priority? If this is the last chance to use landfill dollars, this is your highest priority in the county?
Well, at this point, but I can't say cuz we also have a lot of things hanging out. We have a rock slide. That now has occurred. But right now we're doing an investigation. We're pretty sure we're gonna be fine. But um, over by uh Roland Lake. You remember about ten, twelve years ago, we had a rock slide there. We, if that becomes unstable like it did before, we have to close the road.
Well, and.
And then to fix it, it's probably in excess of a million dollars. Cuz you're.
You were saying, Mr. Anderson, um, we use these for the services, the landfill dollars. And in the future, looking forward, there will be landfill dollars. And there's some speculation up and down different ways, but we'll have to talk about that in the future, but. High need is our roads. And public safety and so keeping landfill dollars in the road department for me will be. A priority. Uh, it'll be important to help fund that so we can keep the roads open and going. Um, if we take landfill dollars from the icing on the cake from other places, I would not have a problem. And we do have, um, from what I understand, excess. Revenue that we will be able to move forward. We don't wanna have too much in our fund balance. So balancing, I don't see balancing. The budget this year will be, the sky is falling like we thought it was going to be. I think we'll make it through without readjusting. So I would like to um, just say leave the. The money in the road department for this year and that'll be a longer conversation for next year and that will allow you to get this project done off your six year road program.
Yeah, will you?
I'd let the next board decide.
Pardon me?
I'm in agreement with that. I would let the next board decide if they wanna strip the last remaining funds out.
Thank you.
And we gave, you know, again, we gave an overall. Idea, um. Seth will provide the maps and then we will also have a more lengthy discussion cuz again, it's our responsibility to make sure the board understands. Um, because if the road system fate starts going to where it goes badly. There's not enough money to make it come back. I mean, it'd be, and I'm not saying the sky's falling. It takes a long time, but. The road is the backbone to the county. Without the roads, there is no emergency services. There's nothing. I mean, and I've heard people say, well, take the money from the road, put it in things that are more important. Remember, government, local government was started for two things, public safety and infrastructure. All, everything else is auxiliary. I mean, it isn't. I don't mean to say that. It's not, it's not true, but that's what, if you go back and look at history. That's what, that's what originally government was started for. I mean, even federal government.
Jeff, quit while you're ahead.
I am quitting. Yes, I was gonna give the George Washington story, but we'll leave, we'll leave him alone.
Better than the Tootsie Roll story.
No, no candy stories. I don't have any candy. We could do the, we could do the uh, is it an apple tree or cherry tree?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Think we're missing, who's next?
Uh, Madam Chair, we have change order number one for the Clickatet County Superior Court remodel project in the amount of forty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty three cents. My motion is to.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Come on up. You're late. Blame it on him.
Listening to Jeff's constitutional speech.
Um, a very brief jail update today. Um. The background is continuing, though I have dates certain now on the process and uh, so things are starting to uh, um. Be set on the schedule, so it's a, it's a, it's a good sign when things are progressing. Um, so. I know I keep saying that a lot, but it's, it's moving at appropriate speed and we're moving into the end phase of the background.
Waiting on others is never easy. And nothing you can do about it.
No, no, the applicant's been great. He's um, uh, cleared his schedule and make sure he's aware of canceled his vacations, done everything he can to be accessible for the background check and. The psych and the polygraph, so um, he's doing everything he can to assist us in this process. So.
Great.
That'd be all today.
Yeah, that was easy.
No questions here?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Christopher, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
That was a very quiet, no. Good morning. Good morning, Lori. We have Lori Anderson from the planning department.
Yes, and we're here today and. Scott's coming in and so is Evan, our new long range planner. And I'm here to do the final steps in the Wilson Monroe rezone. You have an ordinance. I believe you have copies of it there. If not, I have copies. And basically we need the ordinance as well as a zoning map signed.
Okay.
And then once those documents are signed, you've already approved it in previous meetings. Once we have the signed documents, we'll go to the county auditor's office and file them.
Great. Anybody have questions or comments?
We have. Made motions agreeing to the findings of fact and everything. Do you need a motion on the adoption of the ordinance? The actual ordinance?
It probably wouldn't hurt to have that on the actual ordinance as well as a zoning map. And I can't.
Uh, Leanne says, yes, we probably have to give it an ordinance number.
Uh, usually the ordinance number comes in after, that's, that's added after.
That lets her do it.
And you may have copies.
Here, I'll just take them both right now.
Yes, okay.
So I've got mine ready.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would make a motion in the matter of application zone twenty twenty three dash zero two. Uh, the proposal to rezone approximately fifty eight point five seven acres from Forest Resource Rural. Uh, the request involves two properties. Uh, my motion is to approve the ordinance and attach zoning map. You're gonna step down.
So I will step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
You gotta ask for those opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Christopher, those opposed.
Nay.
Okay, so Mr. Christopher, sinay, um, motion passes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And then you'll add an ordinance number and.
We've got your piece of paper. Good morning.
Good morning. Would this be an okay time to introduce Evan?
Yes, you've been trying.
Yeah. Yeah, so with me today is our long range senior planner, Evan Evangelopoulos. From um, Arizona. Got here, uh, it was started just on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. Feels like so much he's uh, already accomplished a great deal as far as work, um, just hit the ground running as far as the solar ordinance goes. Um, as you know, uh, he's gonna be focusing entirely on long range planning. We're gonna incorporate him into current planning, just. Um, meetings, observing, getting used to it so that he, he's also develops that side of things over time, but he's gonna be focused on the long range planning efforts. Um, and we're really thrilled to have him. He's a, has a great fit. We can already tell. So I wanted to introduce him today.
Sure, it's going well, man.
That's great.
Cody?
I've seen you in the hallway. You've been very busy and you and Scott look, both look very happy, so it's going well.
It's a relief.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I think you're gonna have a similar working order from what I see, which is great. Scott has a great work ethic. I can't say enough about him, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad he has you.
I'm glad to be here, absolutely, and it's great to meet everyone and it's a beautiful area. And um, just a pleasure to be here, so I'm glad I made the move. It's a sixteen hundred mile move, but yes.
Well, it's a transition too, and if you don't know a lot of people, always reach out.
Absolutely.
We could help you with anything.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And pleasure to meet you. Sorry, we haven't had a chance to get together yet, but if you guys are free for lunch, I'd be happy to get together with you.
Thank you.
All right.
And Mr. Christopher?
Yes, I am not there to meet you. I'll have to meet you uh, on another day. I'm just happy that uh, hopefully Scott now has the help he needs. And it, it's a lot less stressful up there and a little more work to go around and hopefully we can get a few projects done and I'm. I'm happy to have your expertise here in the county.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you. It definitely is a relief. Um, as you know, he's stationed out of uh, the White Salmon Office, which I'm thrilled to have a presence over there. Um, it's kinda lonely at the very end of a corridor, a few over the conference room cuz that. It's a conference room, then a couple bathrooms and then break room and then a little bit further the health department, so he's. A little lonely, so he'll be coming over here um, at least once a week, sometimes more to pay on meetings. We'll have him here. I'll go over there sometimes, but he'll be here um, probably, probably every Monday as weather permitting and then possibly some other times. Which leads to a conversation about vehicles, which I know has already started, but. A way, the best way to have him travel from his base office to here when he does come over. Unfortunately, he's got an apartment fairly close to the uh, the office, which is really cool, I think.
I live about two blocks away from the office, but it was.
So you're not far from the bakery.
Oh, I'm right next to bakery, right next to grocery store. It's very nice.
And when I envisioned having him over there, when I knew that he'd be interested in that area, I assumed we had vehicles over there. I, I didn't know we didn't until. Um, recently, and so I found that out, so I wanted to ask the board. What do you think would be the best to have a vehicle that would be. There, wouldn't necessarily be our vehicle, but I think that planning might be the only one using it. Um, or if mileage would be more appropriate. I think mileage would obviously be more expensive to our department budget.
I know when we were talking about the um, fleet vehicles, we'd set up fleet vehicles here. Um, and we'd had conversation about having a fleet vehicle on the west side and that never really came to fruition or did it for a short amount of time. And we did for a little while and then I think seniors or somebody took it. Dan might remember better than that. Uh, I see his hand up.
We, we had one over there for a year and a half essentially and it really never got used. Uh, other than by the health department. Uh, and now the health department has their own vehicle, so they don't need it anymore. I don't believe it would be a cost effective and a frugal piece of government to put a vehicle over there to get used once a week. Uh, while I understand uh, reimbursing mileage might seem a little higher, it's far less than a vehicle sitting unattended. So it would be my choice to just pay mileage.
I also think we, you may wanna look into it. Uh, when an employee is scheduled to work out of this building, that's their, that's where their, their office is that day and. And to pay them to. Commute might be a taxable benefit. And if they're coming up for meetings, one thing to be assigned at one location, that is their work site and then being assigned at another location, that is their work site, so. Uh, we may see how other departments do it.
I think we need to look into it a little more before we make a decision, uh, cuz there's other electeds and other, other departments and county policy, so. We'll definitely do a little bit more research, but if, if, if there's an option, I would say, if we had a vehicle there. For a year and a half and we have extra vehicles here, we could have a vehicle over there that you could drive up during those days. And then if it's available to any of the other departments that may or may not need it, that that might be the easiest answer.
The other suggestion I have is look forward into the future. Because you know, Jake, with that long range planning, how many meetings you're gonna have? If you start going to communities and you have to be out at Trout Lake or you have to go east county, if you're working on those long range plans, it takes a lot of visiting.
Thank you. I di- I didn't mention that, but that will be part of it as well as we get into these various meetings on the county.
Yeah.
Uh, I would recommend to the board that we have a future discussion when we have our full staff in office. They can give us an update on our uh, fleet vehicles and we might have one of the current vehicles that is not being used much here that we can ship down there. Uh, and just kinda trial and error until next year and go that route, but. Uh, we need to look and look at our vehicles up here to see if we have one that isn't being used up here and then. If it's just being parked here, it might as well be parked there too, so that's fine too.
I believe staff has already done that.
Yeah, so we can get that answer for you. Uh, but yeah, they, we've, we're three quarters of the way on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that works. Thank you. It's um, he has it right now. It's what he's taking back and forth. Is it okay if he keeps it until we have a decision? Is there any problem with that?
I think that's what it's been set aside for so far.
Okay.
Okay. So it's checked out for the month of October. No one else has asked.
All right.
About?
The Chevy, it's parked out there.
The Tahoe?
The Traverse.
Traverse, got it, okay. Yep, no, that works for me. Yeah, I know that up here, it's mainly the one Explorer that gets checked out, so that one, that one's a good one to go down there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you soon.
Pleasure to meet you.
You too.
Meet you.
Where are we at?
We got Jen online.
Oh, okay. That's where we're at. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing pretty well.
Good.
Um, so I just wanted to jump on here and do a recap of where we are with the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget. I need some, um, direction from the board, um, to be able to go further. And, um, also highlight the changes in the workshop, workshop schedule, um, that, that have been made in the last twenty-four hours. So I emailed each one of you, um, a printed version of the report that I'm kind of gonna, I'm gonna go over verbally. Um, so you have it in front of you. Um, some, some informational detailed numbers. So.
I can use this.
In July, um, office and department, um, preliminary budget submissions. They, as you know, they propose and submit their, um, budget request to my office. Um, the total expense budget was sixty-seven million, seven hundred and eighty, um, thousand and eighty-seven dollars. That initially showed a twelve-point-three-million-dollar deficit. Now I met with the finance team. We reviewed, um, overall revenues and that deficit was reduced to eleven-point-eight. Primary contributors to this deficit were unbalanced funds in, um, three oh five, which is our capital improvement communities fund. And, um, the landfill gas fund of one thirty-nine. And with those budgets being unbalanced, meaning there was no revenue, the revenue was not budgeted or proposed. Um, that was totaled to about six-point-nine-million dollars. After those corrections. Um, we started workshops with the board of county commissioners at a four-point-eight-million-dollar deficit. At the start of October third's workshop, the deficit had decreased through the work of the board, um, to one-point-five-six-two million. However, a correction, there's been a correction with the ARPA funding resulting to an increase. Of the deficit to one-point-eight million. Um, and that, that was just a revenue transfer oversight, um, that. Led to three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of ARPA funding being applied to the general fund, um, in excess. So contributing to that, um, pool of revenues. By the end of that workshop, the deficit was reduced further down to one-point-four-eight-three million. So how the board, how we did that? So, um, the board decided to increase some revenues by two-point-two-eight-five-million dollars. So we increased sales tax a hundred thousand dollars, state entitlements thirty thousand dollars, landfill one-point-five-million dollars. To, to the sum of an eight-point-seven-million-dollar landfill expectation. Interest earnings, um, increased six-hundred thousand. Uh, the board went through expense reductions of a little bit over one-million dollars. So departments and offices such as adult probation reduced forty thousand dollars. Um, due to like software costs that are now going to be paid out of twenty-four instead of twenty-five. The auditor reduced eleven-thousand dollars. The commissioners' budgets, um, reduced five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Which is the adjusting the placeholder to align with last year's, um, percentage used. Buildings and grounds reduced forty-two thousand dollars. Um, that was adjusting wage and benefits to align more with their personnel sheet. And then W S U was reduced by thirty thousand dollars. Um, additionally, the board made some position adjustments. Um, a decision to reduce the coroner from, um, the coroner's budget from one-point-five F T E to one-point-six F T E. Saved about fifty-six thousand dollars to the budget. Economic development and natural resources reduced the one F T E to a part-time F T E. Re-saving about forty thousand dollars. And then the sheriff, um, with a total savings of three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars. By moving the chief jail deputy budgeted position that historically has been budgeted in the sheriff's admin budget. To the new jail budget. And then the sheriff had proposed two new, um, positions that were not on the approved org chart. Uh, for deputies and those were removed. So key questions. Oh, yes.
I think we need to correct it. It's the chief jail deputy, not a deputy.
No, I, I thought I said that.
Want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, chief jail deputy budget was moved from the admin budget to the new jail budget. And then the two new requested patrol deputy positions that were not. But in the approved organizational chart were removed. Um. So before moving forward with the next workshop, I need some direction from the board in the following cost of living adjustments. Uh, we currently have a placeholder for two-and-a-half percent COLA. Um, union departments have budgeted two-and-a-half percent COLA for their, um, CBAs. So, um, H R, myself, need to be, need to be able to move forward with, um. Whether the board's gonna approve, not approve a COLA and at what percent. Um, so we can get the appropriate resolutions drafted and put forward. Um, and then the next thing would be sales tax adjustments for the non-voter approved. Um, required options. So would the board like to continue forward pursuing criminal justice sales tax at point one percent? Or the mental health and chemical dependency sales tax at point one percent? However, that one requires a therapeutic court, so that would need some more discussion on it. Um. And then would the board like to move forward with any fee additions? Um, Public Works brought forward a, a vehicle tab fee. Um, and then the auditor had brought forward a marriage license fee to support family court services. Um, would the board like to address either one of those? And then finally, um, at this point. We're now nearing the stage where last year the board turned over the budget to me in order to balance. Um, would the board like to follow a similar processes that as last year? If so, I can begin to work on balancing the budget while considering adjustments for the upcoming, um, October seventeenth workshop. And then that would allow me to return with a balanced budget proposal and a final recap and the steps taken.
One second, Jen. I wasn't looking. I was looking at my paperwork. Mister Christopher had his hand up.
Okay.
Um, just if you're keeping a tally on where the votes are on the issues. Uh, I'm a yes on the cost of living or COLA adjustment. I'm a no on adding sales taxes and I'm a no on adding additional fees. Uh, I guess I, I, I have concern with your next step. In having you balance the budget because the board hasn't even looked at. Um, other departments, our own included, or things like whether we're continuing to fund the youth center or the water conservancy board. And I think we need to know those things going forward.
Go ahead, Jen.
Yes, so, um, we have a full morning on the seventeenth. We have no workshops for this Thursday, but full, full morning on the seventeenth where we will, um, we have. I believe the finals of, um. Departments, we have weed, economic development, the commissioners' budgets, um, H R and admin services and planning. Those were the last ones, um, that I had on my list from discussions with the board. And, um. My, my point would be that if the board chose to turn things over to me to start working on it. It takes quite a bit of work to try and balance the budget with all the ins and outs. So if the board would like to do that, obviously. What happens on the seventeenth would reflect within that balancing. It would, it's just allowing me to start the process.
I, I guess. For ease of you, I, I'm okay with that. I, I don't like, I don't believe I'm going to like the direction. That you're going, um, based on the, the, the guidance the commissioners are gonna give you. But we'll see that when we get there.
Do you have questions, Mister Anderson?
Just trying to understand what Commissioner Christopher was saying right there. I, I agree that we have departments coming up, um, and we need to have those conversations. Uh, I would say that, uh, based on what I see in those, we're not gonna find one-point-four-million dollars in savings. And so what we should be directing staff to do is come forward with two options, uh, to balance the budget. That can be presented to the B O C C. Um, I don't think we can direct staff to balance the budget. I think, uh, staff needs to provide us options so that we can make that decision. Um, it. And, uh, in terms of moving forward right now, uh, Commissioner Christopher was, uh, a yes. And the two-point-five-six percent COLA, um. I can get behind that because the collective bargaining agreement is giving the two-point-five percent as well. I don't want to, to separate the union from the non-union, um. I don't think we can move forward with the point-one-percent criminal justice sales tax. Um, I wouldn't move forward with that without, um, going and having public meetings and doing town halls and making sure that the community is on board. Um, I think that it's not gonna come up with the number over the long term, um, to fix the problem we're gonna have next year and the years after. And if you put it between, if I'm weighing the scales, I think the, uh, sales tax point-one-percent is not going to, to be as. Palatable as having the, uh, vote go out to the people with regards to, um, an actual assessment. The chemical and mental health dependency sales tax right now, I'm a no on that because we don't have a therapeutic court. Um, in terms of the fees, I wasn't sold on the vehicle tab fee on Public Works. Um, I think that's premature and I don't even remember the conversation on the marriage license fee, uh, cause we've been so busy. But I don't think that's gonna be enough money to make a dent. So I would, I would want to direct staff to, um, come forward with, uh, options that hopefully we can talk about on the seventeenth. That, uh, based on any changes we do on the seventeenth, at the end of that, we can, we can, you know, massage that a little bit. But for the most part, we need to have those, uh, tough conversations.
Uh, for me, on the checklist, Jen's work, I know the amount of work she does and the burden she has. And I have no problem letting her do preliminary work and moving forward to, to bring information to us. So, uh, that's a yes for me. On the COLAs, it's a yes for the same reasons. We need to align with unions. And, uh, I believe in our people. Um, the criminal justice one, I think I would have a lot of questions about that still. So, um, and the mental health and chemical dependency sales tax. That would take a lot of work to set up the court to be ready for that. Uh, I don't think we're near either of those. Um, the vehicle tab, um, I wasn't in favor of, but the marriage license fee, I would like to ask you, Jen, who brought that forward? Was that the judge or the auditor?
The auditor had brought that forward, um, and, and it was, it was in a passing discussion, um, during workshop. And, um. She had mentioned it in the prior year as well.
Okay. Um, I don't think either of my statements were pro, so that probably puts an end. But I, I would like more information on that, just knowing that she'd brought it before, everyone before and what that would actually do. So maybe Thursday you could just update.
I believe it was minimal, but, um, but yes, I can, I can bring something forward.
Yeah, family, if it helps family court services and it's a minimal thing we can do, then that might help that program. And I think that's it.
Perfect. Okay, um, so I will go forward with that in preparation for the seventeenth. Um, our, I currently have a tentative schedule, um, starting the day at eight, eight-thirty. We'll have a fifteen minutes to prepare, um, with potentially weed at eight forty-five. I'm still waiting on confirmation from Nathan. Um, and then going to eleven, eleven-thirty.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
You. Do you have much more on the agenda, Madam Chair?
I have nothing.
Oh, okay. I've got a meeting starting in four minutes, so.
Okay, Mister Christopher, is there anything else for you on the agenda?
I.
Nope.
I saw him unmute, but he must have been talking while the unmute process was going.
There you are again. Nothing else on the agenda for you today, Mister Christopher? He might be. Don't know what's happening. Technical ziffle-tocalities again.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Do we have any meetings that there would be two? Oh, yes, potentially.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting noting that, uh, two or more commissioners may be present. At the Western Caucus meetings tomorrow, uh, and that there will be no workshops on Thursday, the tenth. Um, I'm not aware of anything else, whether it could be two commissioners.
So motion and a second, Mister Christopher. Are you there?
What, Western Caucus meeting?
Um. That is, uh, the Western Caucus. Dan Newhouse is doing a tour tomorrow. Um. Uh, of the west side of the county and then heading to the east side of the county.
Interesting. Was not informed of that. I will second the chair or the, the commissioner's motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we will see.